Welcome to the workshop for the month of March with the Borough Council. I don't have any opening remarks, but I believe our colleague Ms. Sanders has something she would like to say.
Yeah, so I want to share with the community that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and the Adams County Children's Advocacy Center is encouraging residents to participate in the Kids Safe 5% Challenge. This challenge prompts us to recognize, react, and respond to suspected child abuse to keep kids safe. And for those of you not familiar with the Adams County Children's Advocacy Center, it is a child-focused, community-based program that brings together representatives from different disciplines, including law enforcement, child protection, mental health, schools, community organizations, and victim advocacy to help children and families learn how to prevent child abuse and heal from the trauma of child abuse when it occurs. Parents and caregivers, teens and individuals, as well as businesses can go to their website and download the free Go Blue Toolkit for this month. And you could also visit their website called kidsegencac.org and learn more about the Kids Safe Challenge. And that would be actually the challenge you can also find on their YouTube channel. If you just go to YouTube, type in Kids Safe 5% Challenge, you'll find that there along with other really helpful information.
And we also, we've just got some materials to turn the lights around the circle in the center of town, blue for the month of April in recognition of this. And homeowners and businesses are encouraged to turn their porch lights blue for the month as well. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we do have a lot of ground to cover tonight. It's kind of, it doesn't look like much, it's a single-page agenda, but it's a deep bench. And first and foremost, we have a special presentation tonight from Mr. Sanders and Bladen to talk about our Emergency Operations Plan Review and Updates. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podiums, folks at home can hear you through the microphone. For those of you on council who do not know Dave Sanders, he is our Emergency Preparedness Officer for the borough. He also sits on the Civil Service Commission and has years and years and years of experience in this field. And we're grateful to have you here tonight. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Warren Bladen. I'm the Director of the Department of Emergency Services for Adams County. So essentially, I'm your county emergency manager. Thank you for inviting me to speak here this evening. I tend to be long-winded, so if I go on too long, the chief's just going to give me a shove away from the podium. So you'll understand what's happening.
I do it all the time.
I'm not sure the chief would recognize it.
If I could start with just an overview of the Department of Emergency Services. So you have an understanding of what we're doing out at 230 Green Meyer Lane. We essentially are comprised of three different disciplines. The first discipline is probably the most commonly known is the 911 Center. So it is my job as the county 911 Coordinator to operate that center to PIMA standards. The Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency is the state agency that tells us what standards we must meet. And currently, we have 22 full-time positions for telecommunicators or dispatchers in the center. Obviously, we're 24/7, operations 365. We try to staff with five dispatchers per shift. Currently, that's challenging. We're having difficulty recruiting in the field. It's not just Adams County that's facing that challenge, it's nationwide. But we're making progress. So currently, we have two openings, and we'd like to get those filled as quickly as possible. The challenge is it takes quite some time to train someone to be a dispatcher or a telecommunicator. Essentially, from the time they hit the door till they're ready to be released as a dispatcher, we're looking at nine months of training. They're attending specific classes, we call them protocol classes, emergency medical dispatch, emergency fire dispatch, and emergency police dispatch. Those protocols were created by subject matter experts in the field. And basically, it directs the dispatcher or telecommunicator as to what questions to ask when they have a caller on the phone. So what I want to point out to you is when you do find yourself in need and you have to call 911, please be understanding that there's a reason they're asking all of these questions. We're not just asking questions for the heck of it. It's a purpose behind it, and we need candid answers. If you don't know the answer, it's okay to tell the dispatcher, "I don't know." That's an okay response. But they have to go through those questions. They can't just jump to whatever you need and send that particular agency, whether it be law enforcement, the fire service, or EMS. Matter of fact, if they're doing that, they're going to have a meeting with me in my office because we can't do that. PIMA does random audits, and if they find out that we're bypassing the protocols, then I'm in the hot seat. Why is that occurring? So that's what all the questions are about when you call 911. We're trying to make sure that we're getting the appropriate resource to you, and we're doing that as quickly as possible. So you're on the phone with that dispatcher, telecommunicator. They're asking all of these questions, and you're thinking to yourself, "Wow, this takes a long time till someone is actually sent to my location." Well, actually, what's happening while they're asking the questions, another dispatcher is sending that resource out to you. So we're not delaying getting help on the way. We're just gathering more information that we can then convey to law enforcement, the fire service, or EMS to give them a better understanding of what they're walking into, especially law enforcement. Okay, dangerous occupation, they need all the information they can get when they walk into a scene. So that's the 911 Center. The other discipline we deal with is hazardous materials response. Adams County does not have its own hazmat team. I don't see a need for the county to have their own team. But we obviously have to have something in place to handle hazardous material incidents or responses. And what we've done is we've contracted that service with York County. They have a team, and if we need them, they're more than willing to come over to Adams County and help us out. And we've had that in place for, well, since July, or June of last year is when we put that in place. Previously, we had a private contractor doing that. They got out of the business, and then we had to partner with York County. It's been a successful partnership, and I see that continuing into the future. And then the final discipline that we deal with, probably my favorite, is emergency management. And that's really the topic of discussion this evening. Emergency management essentially is preparing for, planning for, and responding to disasters. And that's what we do. So in Pennsylvania, when we talk about emergency management and who has the responsibilities, we look at Title 35. Title 35 tells us, it actually directs and authorizes every political subdivision, and that's a county, city, borough, incorporated town, or township, to have an emergency management program that includes a trained emergency management coordinator. Mr. Sanders is yours. I'm the one for the county. An emergency operations plan, you guys have a plan on file with us. It's about to the point where we should talk about an update, and we've been discussing that. So we're going to move forward with an update of your plan. We're going to work with your emergency manager. And then a functioning emergency operations center, or EOC. That's the third thing you really need to have under Title 35. Breaking it down even further, the first thing we've talked about is a trained and certified EMC, Emergency Management Coordinators, Mr. Sanders. All right, when you put someone in this position, who should you select from your community to serve this role? Well, it's someone who's had some experience in emergency services is always a plus. So typically, you'll see a volunteer firefighter or someone in law enforcement who also takes on this role. That's a good selection. But you need someone who can do the job. And unfortunately, it's commonplace in the Commonwealth in smaller communities like Adams County that we put someone in the position who maybe has been in the fire service for 40-some years, is no longer able to participate in those activities, and really isn't able to participate in the activities as an emergency manager. And that's challenging. So we really need to make sure that we select someone who can fill the role, who's physically able to get out there during the time of disaster and lead your community. Also, you need someone who is trained, who's willing to go through the certification process. Mr. Sanders is. And we're constantly updating the training opportunities, bringing out more opportunities for our EMCs. Most of that's coming from PIMA, and some of it is coming from FEMA. And I will talk about FEMA in just a little bit. But Dave's online with all of our courses. He's kept up to date with his certifications, and he's moving forward. And I'm pleased to see that. And I keep pointing to Dave and telling him, you know, he's done this, he's done that. You should feel blessed because you have someone who is involved. He's very involved as an EMC, more so than others in this county. We have 34 municipalities in the county, and I probably have a handful of EMCs that are truly active and involved. Dave is one of them. A current EOP, Emergency Operations Plan, I just mentioned that earlier. We're going to sit down and work with Dave to revise that, update it. It should go no more than five years till it's updated. We should probably do it a little more frequently if possible to make sure we have the...
Every two.
Yeah, that's what we shoot for, every two years. But I did check today, and I saw that this plan was five years out, so that, we need to work on that. Now, you might have a more current plan, maybe we just don't have it on file, so we'll look into that. Another suggestion or requirement is a better way to put it, is a communication system. Well, the borough doesn't have to do anything in that regard because the county provides a communication system. I think you can attest that it's a quality system. It's a digital P-25 radio trunk system. You guys don't know what that means. Basically, it's a radio system that gives us 98% coverage over the county. It's been, oh my gosh, how many years has that radio system was built? I don't, I can't, it's been around for quite some time, probably about 10 years it's been in service. It was designed and built by Motorola. Once they completed the project, they found out that they actually had better coverage than was required under the contract. They exceeded their requirements with coverage, and that's incredible. The areas that we don't have coverage of a radio system, the Sho Forest. There are areas out there where this Commonwealth is not willing to allow us to put up a tower. And there are some, what we call dead spots, where the radio doesn't work. But we've got incredible coverage in this area, so you don't need to worry about communication system, it's in place. Evacuation plans, we have those in place. Dave has worked with us in developing those, so it's not something he has to reinvent. We kind of already have it in place. We have designated mass care shelters, like the high school, for example. When, if and when we need to activate a mass care shelter, our partner in that is the Red Cross. They typically step up and help us with that task. The borough should have a resource manual. Essentially, it could be a binder. And in that binder, you just have contacts and lists of different resources and where you can find them. What's a resource? Well, it could be a situation where we need dump trucks. Well, we know the borough already has dump trucks, so you would contact your highways department, your road department. And they have that already, but there might be other resources that the borough doesn't have. It's a good idea to have that resource manual where you can just open the page, "This is what we're looking for, and here's a vendor where we can find that." Let's talk about resources for a little bit because people often ask, "Well, if Title 35 tells us that the responsibility falls to the borough for emergency management, it's, you have the authority, you have the control and the responsibility, what does the county do? Why do we need the county then? Why do we need to employ Warren if we're going to handle it locally?" Well, county emergency management gets involved when two or more municipalities are involved in a disaster. That's when I would step up. Or when, just say we have a disaster just in the borough, but you have unmet needs. It's beyond your resources to handle that disaster, then Dave can reach out to me. And we can get involved at that point. If we don't have the resource, the next option is to look to PIMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. Make that request, see if they can get the resource for us. And then if they can't meet our needs, then finally, we're at the federal level with FEMA. If we're making requests outside of the county, if we're going to PIMA or FEMA, it doesn't happen overnight. It doesn't happen within a couple hours. If I make a request to PIMA, we're looking at probably 48 to 72 hours before that resource arrives here. If I reach out to FEMA and we need something here, we're probably looking at seven to 14 days before the resource arrives here because it could come from anywhere in the country. So it would take a while to get here. Now, when we need a resource, the first thought is not to turn to the county and then to PIMA because if I turn to PIMA, what they're going to say to me right off the bat, "Warren, have you tried locally to acquire that resource?" If you can get it locally, then you do that. If you find out that it's not available in Adams or York County or Franklin County, that's when you go to PIMA. So I don't want anyone to have the misconception that, "Oh, we can save our funds by pushing it up to PIMA and having them provide the resource," because they will push back on me every time. Now, when I travel around to other counties of our size, they typically have a small conference room where they could set up an EOC. But Adams County has one set up, you know, 24/7. All we have to do is walk in and turn the lights on, we're ready to function. You don't need that at the local level, okay? So don't burden yourself with trying to find space and, you know, equipment and setting everything up and keeping it staffed. No, what you need is a conference room where you can set up some tables, some laptops, and some telephones. That's what you would need. This room would work perfect. You may have another room here in the facility that's more appropriate. But that's all you really need to set up an emergency operations center. So those are the courses, the G courses. I'm trying to get those here in Adams County. I'm trying to make arrangements with PIMA so we can have the classes right out at the Emergency Services Building at Green Meyer Lane so no one has to travel to Harrisburg or Westchester or wherever the courses are being offered. So I'll keep you apprised of that. I'll let Dave know, and he can pass that along to you so we can get you signed up for some classes. Hazard mitigation plan, yes?
I took one of the classes.
Right now, they're also facing quite testing questioning from the judge here, Judge Warren.
My question is, which wasn't clear to me, and if you can make it clear to everyone here, who declares the emergency?
You do.
The president, the borough council, the borough manager?
It would be...
I'm going to work with the borough manager, and we're going to get you involved because you have to sign the declaration.
Right.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
I mean, it's going to be multiple people. The chief's going to be involved with it, the fire chief's going to be involved with it. Do we need to declare an emergency? Yes. Charles will be notified, and if it gets real bad and ugly, the rest of you are going to be notified if the borough's going to be spending a bunch of money.
I'm glad you brought that up.
I'm serious, I looked at that.
Yes.
And it was not clear in the training material to me.
And it wasn't clear because that was a FEMA course for the whole nation.
Correct.
And things are a little bit different because we live in a Commonwealth. And that's why all this responsibility is falling to the local level because we live in a Commonwealth. Declarations of disaster, important documents, okay? On my level, at the county level, I'm turning to the county commissioners, I'm like, "I need a declaration. You need to sign a declaration." The first thing it does, the most important thing it does for me is it changes the way we do business. Before the declaration, if we need to find a resource and I need to purchase something, we have to put bids out, and it's a long, drawn-out process. Once I have that declaration, we no longer have to do that. We can go out and purchase the resource immediately, okay? So that's why it's important to me. It's also important if federal funds are going to flow to Adams County. So often, I'm on the phone with local EMCs saying, "Hey, I need a declaration from you guys. Can you get me one quick?" And then he should be pushing you to get it, and then fax it to me. As soon as we get them, we send them to PIMA. When a disaster hits, most common disaster here is flooding. That's what I deal with frequently. The first thing we want to do is damage assessment. How much damage do we have in the county? One form of federal funds is called public assistance. And public assistance actually doesn't go to the community and the public. It's going to the local governments. For example, just say we have a bridge that washes out. Public assistance would go towards replacing that bridge or repairing that bridge or roadway. So for public assistance, we have to have, right around the neighborhood of $400,000 worth of damage. That's the threshold we have to meet. So just say we have $405,000 worth of damage, we met the threshold. The next thing is, the Commonwealth has to meet a threshold. I don't know their dollar amount off the top of my head in my office. And if they meet that threshold, the next thing we do is we look to the White House. Is the president going to make a declaration? Because once the president makes a declaration, then we can start to look to the federal government for money for public assistance. All right, just say we don't meet our threshold, we only have $300,000. I still report that to PIMA because even if we're not, Adams County's not meeting the threshold, PIMA might meet their threshold. And if they do, our neighboring counties could possibly get money because they have more damage. So we want to report what damage we do have to help them along, to help meet that state threshold. So that's why it's important to do a good damage assessment, to get out there. And your EMC should be doing this, and Dave does this because I've had him do it, he's reported back to me, getting that information to us so we can push it up as quickly as possible to PIMA to see where we come with the thresholds. So I'm hopeful that, you know, if the roles are reversed and we've met our threshold, I hope the other counties are reporting so the Commonwealth meets their threshold and the possibility for money comes our way. I want to talk about hazard mitigation plans because every five years, I have to submit one to FEMA. And we're starting that process in the next couple of months. Each borough, township, city in Pennsylvania has to submit a hazard mitigation plan. They're very time-consuming and challenging to put together. It's not uncommon for FEMA to look at a plan and reject it. The last time we did one, five years ago, the first thing we did is I went looking for some federal money to help with the project, specifically to hire a consultant. Because my staff is small, we don't have enough people working in DES to handle this. So we were able to secure $60,000 in grant. And then I started to interview consultants to see who could put this together for us. And most of the bids were coming in at $60,000, and I'm like, "Imagine that." And one consultant was very candid with me, "Well, Warren, we know how much money you got. We know what the federal government gave you to do this project. All your bids are going to come in in that neighborhood." So actually, we found more than welcome to participate in our plan. We want you to participate in the plan and use our plan so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Any other questions?
I have a question. Does FEMA provide any technical assistance at all, at no cost, at least to get started, or at least...
For the plan?
For the plan.
No.
Okay.
No. That resource just isn't there.
Yeah.
If you don't have a hazard mitigation plan in place, and you don't adopt ours, and mitigation funds are coming your way or coming to communities, you're not going to get it because you don't have a plan in place. So that's why I pushed this. You know, it's really easy, just adopt ours and have someone from the borough participate. Because I pushed our consultant, I said, "We've got a lot of historic items here. I want you to focus on that," which they did. So, ma'am.
I learned today at a meeting that 4.4% of Adams County folks do not have access to automobiles. If the emergency involves an evacuation, what happens?
We would look to our partners, the Red Cross, to help us with that task of moving people. Also, we have plans in place for public transportation to bring them into the picture, and they would help us.
And also listed in our resource manual, saying if you need buses, where to go get them, who to contact, where to go.
Related to that, what about the schools? Dave, do you do programs in the schools about if there's an evacuation, how to then hook up with the parents who are evacuating differently?
That's all through the school.
Yeah.
We don't get involved with that.
The school districts do their own emergency management planning as well. As a matter of fact, I just met with Conewago Valley last week. But they have plans in place for reunification, is what they refer to it as. So when they move students from one institution maybe to another school, they have, all of that is planned out.
We had been instructed to take the IS 908, and I believe most of us have completed that at this point. But you're saying that we also are required to do these other four IS programs as well?
Yes.
I didn't want to clarify that.
100, 200, 700, and 800.
Thank you. Is there more to present?
No, that's it.
Does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen? Fellas, I just want to say thank you. I think a lot of us are new to this subject, but what you're describing, of course, is one of the basic core functions of a government. And I think everybody here is probably extraordinarily appreciative of the knowledge and efforts you're putting in here on behalf of the borough. Thank you, Dave, for everything you do on this. And I want to assure you that we take this all very seriously as well, and we will be pursuing those trainings immediately. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So it takes us back to the rest of our agenda for the evening. As I said earlier, it is a very full agenda. And the first order of business is public comment. This first public comment section is restricted to items appearing on the agenda for tonight. We ask that you use the podium. Please limit yourself to five minutes. Take your name and residence or address of residence. And if you have something you'd like to say that's not on the agenda tonight, we ask that you save that for the second public comment session at the end of the evening. Public comment.
Good evening. I'm Randy Wallett. I'm the Church Council President at Christ Lutheran Church here in Gettysburg, 44 Chambersburg Street. Last week, we got a notification from the borough office that we were no longer allowed to place parking, or bags over the parking meters on Sunday morning. So we discontinued that as directed last Sunday. 8:15 service wasn't too bad. 10:30 was a bit of a disaster because other people, other than our congregation, started parking in those eight spaces out in front of our church. So I'm here to just express our congregation's dismay at the decision that was made that we can no longer put the parking, church parking-only bags on those meters. Our congregation consists of 389 members. Average attendance last year was 115. This past Sunday, we had 170 people worship with us. Our congregation has been a part of Gettysburg since the mid-1830s, approaching 200 years. We were a hospital during the battle, one of the major hospitals, a very historic structure and a very historic congregation. For many years, we have had permission to put, from the borough, to place bags on eight meters that are directly in front of our church property. The bags are there to allow our members and visitors that have mobility issues to park close to the access to the handicap entrance, to the elevator, to the ramps. We have a number of senior members of the congregation with real mobility issues. They're using walkers, et cetera. And to have to park a block or two blocks away and try to navigate to get to the church and get to the elevator is extremely difficult. I mean, there's the bag. I mean, we've been putting on there for years. This is a simple bag, and most people acknowledge it's there, and we have the spaces reserved. The bags go on about 7:30 Sunday morning. We have an 8:15 service. The people that park there, those people leave, people come in for our 10:30 service. Bags are generally removed by those people. Ushers come out during or after that 10:30 service to make sure all bags are removed before noon. So they're up there just a brief period in front of our church for members with mobility issues. So I really would express our real concern and our dismay at the decision that we can't put bags out there on those meters for our seniors with mobility issues. And I would really ask the borough reconsider that decision and just beg for your mercy for our seniors who struggle to get into our church. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, yes.
No, I was just thinking, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Susan Thresher, Parish Manager of St. Francis Xavier Catholic Parish. The church that is in question for us is 25 West High Street in Gettysburg. Ours isn't so, because of the, our street is mostly yes churches. Our question is not being able to put, like most parishes, most churches, our congregation is maturing, and they need, we need handicapped spaces. So to have the handicapped spaces in front of our church is a necessity, and we don't think that we should penalize our parishioners, preventing them from coming to Mass because of not being able to find a place to park. So it is very important that we have handicapped spaces available to our parishioners. We are a congregation of almost 2,000 parishioners. Now granted, we don't have that many parking in the front of our church. But what we have, we do need for our masses to allow our parishioners the opportunity as their, one of their rights to have religion in their lives, to have, to come to Mass and to... as, to come to mass and to practice the right of freedom of religion. So by preventing them, by taking away those spaces, they no longer have that freedom. And we, I just found out, too, that we no longer have the opportunity to have free parking in front of our church during holy days, which is a very big thing for us as well. Good Friday, for one, there is no longer free parking. Our parishioners have to pay. I know in the past, they have gotten ticketed, which I don't believe is quite right, but I implore you to change your decision on that one as well. We do need to have the ability to have freedom of religion. Any questions, concerns?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Last chance, anybody? All right, we're going to move on. All right, our first current old business tonight are our first bite at the apple on the sidewalk ordinance revision package. Those of you who saw our manager's presentation on this some weeks ago, saw the diagram that is meant to illustrate that tackling the subject of sidewalks is not a simple one. There are ripple effects. There are many aspects of sidewalks that touch lots of different ordinances and vice versa. So we have prioritized the laundry list of issues, and we're going to kind of chip away at the easiest ones first until we get down to the real nuts and bolts here towards the end of this process. So tonight's subject is going to be on Lincoln Square management and the Lincoln Square center circle. I'm going to turn this over to Manager Gable and Mr. Whitmore.
So, yeah, these are ancillary topics F and G, just so everyone's familiar with those. Here's, this is just a text version of the graphical representation that you just saw. So we're going to deal with F and G at the bottom of the list. Council has the policy briefing summary. I'll just read this, the latest installment as it relates to Lincoln Square management and Lincoln Square central circle. Lincoln Square sidewalks are entirely located within the public right-of-way with interaction of pen-dot maintenance affecting the various cartways, and the borough's parking department management of on-street parking around the circle. While portions of the right-of-way may be platted to individual property owners, the use and enjoyment of those lands encumbered by a right-of-way cannot be withheld by the affected property owner. Lincoln Square sidewalk is unique in that certain maintenance activities are conducted by the borough. For example, that's the one area where the borough will take responsibility for removing ice and snow, as opposed to the property owners on traditional sidewalks. That's their responsibility. This arrangement has created an environment whereby it may be practical for the borough to provide all maintenance within the square, with the exception that activities associated with the circle and squares, sidewalks, be sanctioned by the borough. By providing ordinance, the borough of Gettysburg could agree to maintain and repair sidewalks in Lincoln Square, as those facilities could be better developed to provide more space to community groups, outdoor dining, First Amendment zones, and other unique economic development opportunities or activities and opportunities. Exhibit four is the current standing policy of the borough passed by resolution, which specifically addresses just the center circle where the flagpole is located. So as we get to suggestions that staff is articulating, I'm not going to read that section there in the middle. That's essentially referencing the resolution that was passed, I believe it was 2017, yeah, June 12, 2017. The ability to place additional installations in the circle is limited, and there is no enabling provision or application suggestion to allow for organizations or potential applicants to seek permission to install temporary improvements within the circle. Provision is provided by the policy to allow that, quote, "The borough may, from time to time, consider the installation and placement, and either install or place or direct to be installed or placed additional structures, displays, paintings, plantings, or landscaping on or in the center circle, including structures or displays associated with the borough-sponsored events." Staff recommends that Section 2 of the policy be amended to clearly indicate if non-borough-sponsored events or other temporary installations are permitted, and to provide that in written application to be made to the borough manager to approve such temporary installation. An example of this was discussed earlier tonight, as it relates to essentially changing the hue of the lights in Lincoln Square. There currently is no provision that formally authorizes that to occur. There are a few, I would suggest, where the council has already deemed such temporary displays, and those are where the council has formally appropriated public funds for activities, such as the Fourth of July celebration, New Year's Eve on Lincoln Square, the Halloween parade, Gettysburg Christmas Festival, Memorial Day Parade, and Remembrance Day Parade. If you remember, all those appear in your 2024 budget with some sort of appropriation. So by doing so, the council has already authorized those organizations to potentially petition for some type of temporary display, if that's a policy you would like to pursue. However, Child Advocacy Month is not something that you have formally taken action to endorse. So I think staff is in a position where we would need direction from the council. If you would like to do those types of things moving forward, I think we should have a more formal process to make those types of things happen. Do you want to add any finer points?
Just in general, the, an application process would provide equal opportunity for any community group to be able to utilize the circle, and just provides them a check that we can establish on a yearly basis how the circle is actually being used.
What would that formalized process look like?
Probably add it to a special event permit. I would think that would probably be the easiest avenue to do so. And then if it's, if it's, for example, a child advocacy wants to come and change the hue of the lights, we could have them fill out a special event, make that a special event, and then council would vote on said proposed activity.
Is this talking about the center square?
Actually, it's all, it's both.
Because I, I need to speak up about anything in the middle of the square or in the circle. The ingress and egress from the middle of the circle is at best hazardous to get people out there. We should not be having groups cross to put things out there. We should not be having programs out in the middle unless the square is closed, because it's simply too busy in the square for people to cross, or there's no mechanism for them to cross or crosswalk for them to get into the square. So I would just say, as a public safety standpoint, in the middle of the square, we-
That's understood. That's actually part, that's in the resolution.
I just, I just want to make sure I didn't see that.
No, that's a, that's a really important distinction. Thank you for bringing it up. And we've all seen it, right? We've all seen tourists go out there for the photo op. We've had a protest or two standing there, and it's just not, it's not safe.
It's worrisome to me. I'll put it-
Yeah, this, anything that would be envisioned here is the borough staff would be erecting and taking down said displays, yes.
All right. Thoughts, discussion? Anybody like it?
Is there any New Year's Eve on Lincoln Square this year?
That has been canceled.
Somebody wants to take it over.
Yep.
You got 30 grand?
I got you, babe.
Everybody that attended donated 10 bucks or 5 bucks. It would be paid for.
We can see what we can do.
Yeah, no, that, the organizers of that announced that the second week in January, that two years in a row, they were running out of deficit, and they have not chosen, they have chosen to not proceed.
And the organizers that did it before for decades announced their last year, and well enough time for somebody else to take it on. They didn't, and then 2020 happened. So I think that ship has sailed. But if somebody else wants to take it on, please feel free to contact the borough and take it on. But again, if everybody that attended just donated $5, it would have been paid for, and a nonprofit wouldn't be in a deficit over it.
A bit of a digression, so we're going to bring it back here. Not a unwelcome one, though. So if there were a question here for council from the staff, it would be?
One, do you want to formally adopt an ordinance or something similar to an ordinance? Perhaps it can just be a resolution, formalizing what we currently do as it relates to maintenance and permitting on the square, as it relates to what Planning Director Whitmore talked about as far as how public rights of way are managed.
Yeah, okay. I think that would be an important thing to do, especially memorializing the maintenance responsibility, as well as formalizing procedures for how we administer and approve the public use of that square. Does anybody have any thoughts they'd like to share? Yes, no, maybe?
No, I agree. I don't know why it's not been done yet. It definitely needs to be done. The Lincoln, the Lincoln Square is Lincoln Square. Center circle has, has, needs to have a policy. It's not anybody's private property. It is public square. Needs to be formalized. Public Works always removes the snow, not the, not the owner of the property. It's the public. It's public property. The borough needs to maintain it. And as far as the center square, you know, for example, just the changing, the hue, the color of the lamps on the center square for a special event, I think that that could be something included with a special event permit. But I hesitate to say that just because you fill out and are approved on a special event, that you are being granted whatever color you want. I mean, I think there's some details in there that probably need to be worked out.
That's true. So this will be the second time, well, the third instance where we have changed the hue of those lights for April.
No, I love it. I think it's great, especially for April coming up.
But it takes specific materials. And I was able to acquire those materials because I work with some theatrical lighting people. But it's not something you can pick up at, you know, the grocery store.
No, I mean, that's why I mean why there, there needs to be some details and procedures put in place of it, put in place for it, such as, you know, where do you get the materials? This is where you get the materials. You have to get it from this specific, I mean, it can't just be, yeah, 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 whatever color you want.
Right.
Bring some wax paper and colored glue, and, no. It has to be a specific item that's, that Public Works knows is safe and works with those lights, that the organizers would get or would pay the borough to get from the qualified vendor that Public Works is installing into those lights.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I don't know if making it just part of the special event permit, and then that's a checkbox, or if that's something that is discussed amongst the staff approving said special permit.
And it's not without cost, either.
So that it's not just like a free-for-all.
Right. There are, there are public works man-hours involved as well.
Correct.
So there's definitely considerations.
That's all I've got to go, yeah. But I am absolutely in favor of, of the idea of that.
Yeah, I don't know that it would be taken advantage of terribly frequently in that most of our, most of our events that shut down the square happen during daylight hours, and then we have a few that are in the nighttime. So-
This is not just about-
Right.
-hues of light. It's, there's, you know, temporary, like banners or signage, or, you know, those types of things would be envisioned in said vote as well.
Yep. So I think Chad Allen's point, though, is that we, you know, we really want to make sure we cross our i's and star our j's.
Right. Because it's one thing when it is an approved borough-sponsored special event activity, but if it is not an approved borough-sponsored special, special event activity, and it's just another special event, that portion of the square could be part of the permit application, and hey, I want to put, you know, this there on the center of the square, or hey, I want this, those lamps on the center square to be this color. Who decides what's appropriate, what's not?
Well, that, that's exactly the issue we're bringing up.
That's why I'm saying, yes.
Because right now, staff is in a position to just kind of, well, that sounds reasonable. Let's go do it. But there's really no authorizing legislation to allow.
Right. So that's why I'm saying I'm in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of a free-for-all. I'm not in favor of just a checkbox on the permit application.
Right. I think what's being asked is if we want to formalize-
Yes.
-the approval process in the permitting-
Sure.
-for special events. Anybody else have anything you want to add on this?
So as this relates to the sidewalk, if there was need for repairs on a portion right now, would the borough be taking care of it, or who would it fall under current?
Well, you're talking about the maintenance of the square?
Right.
The right now, it's-
So this is still, we would still be operating under that? This just formalizes it more?
It does. And it clarifies to the adjoining property owners how the square is maintained and operated.
Makes sense.
Anyone else?
How often in the square do we have, like, signs and banners, and for what?
Very limited. Very limited. That's by design. You know, the, the flag pole's essentially considered sacred territory. Ms. Butterfield has a story about how that went awry one year, long before I showed up here. So, but apparently the flag was taken down, and not American flag was put up there, and that was not good.
That brought the largest bruise that we've ever seen in this-
Which is one of the reasons we have the resolution, is to help clarify those types of things. I just think we're in a position now where we need to clarify a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, I will voice, you know, and I voiced it before, prior to me being on council, I will voice the opinion of, I don't believe in banners on the square and signs on the square circle unless the square is shut down completely. I think that that is a traffic, and I want drivers focused. When they're coming through our square, I want them slow. I want them focused on our pedestrians and on what, because sometimes tourists are like, I've never seen a roundabout before, and they don't know. I don't want distractions. Now, if it's a, if it's a color lamp at night, that's one thing. But I agree. Nothing should change on the flagpole, and I don't, I don't agree with signs and banners on square unless they're traffic signs.
That's the issue, the flagpole, that was on that occasion.
Yeah.
Nothing can fly on the flagpole except the flag of the United States. And the Christmas festival in the early years placed the Christmas festival flag on the flagpole.
No, the Gettysburg festival did that, on the flagpole.
And folks in town riled up and complained, demonstrated, squatted, and that's when we learned to be careful of the square.
Any other thoughts here? Everybody concur that staff is on the right track here? Okay. Do you have what you need?
I just would want to make one point regarding the mechanism of how we do that and so forth. If it's the borough legislating, then we do need to do an ordinance. If it's just a statement of public policy, then we can do it by resolution. So, but if we're legislating, we're kind of constrained to use the ordinance format to, to address this.
Okay. Do you have what you need?
Do you have preference?
Do I have a preference? Well, I think we need to distinguish what we're doing, and then I do have a preference. I mean, oh, you mean in terms of legislation?
Legislation through ordinance or a policy through resolution?
I suspect we're probably going to do, because we're going to be issuing permits and-
So we should do an ordinance?
Yeah. It's not a preference. It's just the way, the mechanism we must use under the borough code.
Right. So it looks like we're heading towards an ordinance.
Understood. All right. Thank you. Takes us to our next subject for the evening, which is going to be the Stevens Wall- Takes us to our next subject for the evening, which is going to be the Stevens Wall channel ownership. Mr. Claybuck.
Chad, I'm gonna start your slideshow over again if you want to talk to this. So I don't think you need to go through the whole thing. I think we just go to the question of who should or not have ownership of the walls and then get to the last slide.
Am I okay here?
You're fine.
So then, can you see the presentations that I've just traveled? We'll kind of just skip through it pretty quickly here so that you can get a little bit of pressure. At the end of the day, what I'm looking for from the council is, if you want to take this to the next step, if the council wants to take ownership of these walls, then the next step is to write a policy to that regards. And that would be directing either the solicitor and/or myself, along with Borough staff, to start writing that policy. So the first slide here, you can see some of the pictures of the locations on where we're excluding the walls from this discussion. Again, what we were talking about is only the walls where there is no structures over top of it. Where there's structures over top of it, it gets much more complicated. So we've excluded these locations for now so that we can focus on the most critical elements. Go ahead. So here are some of the locations of the most critical elements. There's a couple of photos here of, you can see how much these walls are rotating in a couple of these pictures. We kind of discussed these in detail last month. And again, we talked about how far these things are out of rotation. The best slide here is the one on the right. You can see the red line is the, is a straight up and down. And you can see kind of how much that's rotating. Cannot suggest that one and a half to four inches is bad. We have walls that are nearly 12 inches out of rotation.
Was I saying one and a half to?
One and a half to four inches out of rotation is starting to get concerning. We have walls that are 12 inches, yeah, so. You can see in this slide here, just have places where there's large sections of the walls that are, that are starting to fall out. It's the old masonry rocks that are, where the mortar's just washed out. This one's Kieran Alley where it failed a couple of years ago. This one is near, between Carlisle Street and Dillon Alley. This is the old late-night bikes building here, but that wall is, again, falling in. And one other thing to mention with that one is, a few years ago, part of that wall did fall in, so the next section of that wall is imminent. This is a tricky little section, and the reason why we wanted to talk about this one is because you have about five properties in a row where you can't just replace one piece of that with one property owner. If you're going to replace that wall, you need to replace essentially a wall on, it might actually be six different properties. This is one of the more concerning wall sections and how far it's out of rotation. Again, nine inches of rotation measured across a 12-inch height. And this is kind of getting down to the end, so we aren't as concerned about this. This is on a downstream side of Forest Street, but it would be included with the rest of the wall, so we just include that one. This slide showed us some of the before and afters of the way that we reconstruct these walls. We use these gravity wall systems that don't have to have the tiebacks, just because we don't have room for tiebacks. And we talked about the next step. So the way I left last meeting was this question. Does the Borough want to accept or take ownership or not? Option one, if you want to take ownership, I've spelled out some of the next steps for taking ownership. If you don't want to take ownership, well, then things get a little bit more complicated. So before we get into the, dive into the weeds of not taking ownership, just make that decision first, and then we can come back to that one if you decide that.
And we should probably mention the price tag.
So for the sections that we are looking at focusing on, without the structures on top, without the ones that we're excluding that I showed you in the first slide, just the ones that we're focusing on, somewhere between five to seven million for replacing those walls. And there's, there's any given property where, for instance, there's, there's multiple properties where the wall on that property would be several hundred thousand dollars to replace a wall on one property.
So this is where your authority, the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority, comes into play here. The authority does not own what I'm going to call the asset, these walls, but they do have the ability to have a funding mechanism to support the price tag that Chad just mentioned. So the Borough, if you choose to, would own the walls. If not, we can have that discussion. But then Stormwater Authority largely would be the mechanism to fund the reconstruction of the walls.
And how would the authority accomplish that?
Through fees and debt service.
So it's really the taxpayer that's paying it then?
Not just taxpayers. This is one of the reasons the council raised the authority, so that nonprofits and tax-exempt properties, just like they have water sewer bills, they have a stormwater bill.
Right, and most residents, I mean, and they have a very good rate of payment. But still, it's not, but they could also apply for grants possibly, right?
Yes, which we're actually going to talk about later in this meeting.
Is there, is it true that in the initial research, Chad, it was hard to determine which properties owned the wall and which ones were owned by the Borough? There's really no documentation?
There was very little, I'll call it inconclusive at best. The solicitor did some research, the solicitor for the Stormwater Authority. And of course, we had some institutional knowledge from folks like John Mulver, who over the years, the Borough has kind of just gone in and fixed the walls whenever they've, whenever they've fallen in. So there was no clear, we were actually very surprised that there wasn't more clear documentation. Mike Malawicki did research in a Borough files back to the 20s, I believe, to where it was hard to read the documentation and just couldn't find anything that was super clear.
You'd almost have to do a title search for every property to determine or make a determination, because very, very importantly, and we have to keep this in consideration constitutionally, that, I mean, for the Borough to acquire ownership, that's condemnation. That's the taking of private property rights by a public entity. And we're required to do things so not only we have to establish and know what we're dealing with, but we would also, if we would have to have surveys done, we would have to have appraisals done so that we would make sure, because we are duty-bound to pay just compensation if we are actually taking something that's a private property right.
And we are confident that we have the legal authority to do those condemnations or seizures if we must?
We'd take a look at that, but I would anticipate that we would be able to demonstrate that it would be in the public interest, but...
And if a property owner were to contest it, then do we have other options, eminent domain?
Well, that is the way that it gets contested, actually. An eminent domain action is an action in court where, and oftentimes, what happens is if there isn't a question of whether or not ownership can be derived from the action, it really is, what is the value of what the Borough is taking becomes. And thus why we have to get special appraisals and so forth for, almost on a, well, on a property-by-property basis.
If one of these parcels hypothetically were currently, had no buildings on it whatsoever, and somebody were to purchase it, would we have construction standards that dictate how close to the wall they can get? Can they build on top of the wall, as some of the yellow highlighted properties have? Would we, you know, would we engage in any sort of review process before a structure was built, saying, hey, that's too close to the wall?
Yes, so we actually had one of those that came in and that we went through some of that process, that we wanted them to be a certain distance away from the wall. There's also, in a lot of cases, a floodplain where there's a flood ordinance, where that is, is usually the hammer. Our floodplain ordinance is pretty, it excludes most construction, so if it's in a floodplain, they would go through it anyways.
But we currently have structures that are within the floodplain.
Absolutely, yeah. And if there's an existing structure, they may maintain those. There's a certain threshold where they have to bring them up to standards, but yes, there are existing structures within the floodplain for sure.
I know that you don't like being caught on the spot like this, Gerald, but do you happen to have access to the floodplain map?
I'd have to go look for it.
Yeah, okay, I just, if you had it on your calendar. Our previous planning director kept a printout, a large, you know, four-foot by four-foot map of the floodplain in our office. And it's a pretty fascinating document to see. It's made in conjunction with FEMA, and it's describing the situation of the, you know, sort of decennial or centennial floods, you know, the water-based cataclysm that we would have to live through. And there's a pretty direct correlation between proximity to Stevens Run and the floodplain, although there are other portions of the Borough that are also in the floodplain that are not adjacent to this particular channel. I think it could be argued pretty easily that the Borough, in the event of, you know, high water, we have a responsibility to move the water out of the Borough as efficiently as possible, and that the maintenance of this channel is an essential municipal service. But I think it could also be argued that a lot of these parcels were purchased with or without clear, the lines, some of them extend into the channel, some of them stop at the edge of the wall. It's all different. Some of them, you know, like some of the ones highlighted in yellow either are built on top of the channel or the channel wall is part of the structure, something we probably would discourage now. But I'm curious to hear people's thoughts here, right? I mean, if we take ownership, we are looking at incurring a ton of work here. And we would be sort of taking the liability away from these homeowners. I'm guessing there's probably significant liability, too, if we own the walls and they collapse and that affects the structure. You know, if a house is built two feet away from the wall and it caves in right there, have we now created liability for the Borough because of the damage to the structure? I think that's an interesting question, too, right? Maybe a little bit practical, maybe a little bit academic, I don't know. So discussion.
The converse to that, just for argument's sake, is there are areas where if the Borough did not own them, and there would be a failure, the fix would be better part of six figures and is, is that reasonable to expect a property owner to deal with that? To, and then build that to the Borough specs to repair it. And then in either case, the Borough would be in a situation, an emergency situation, where we'd have to go in and figure out a quick solution anyway.
Right.
To something like that.
I like the idea of the Borough owning this, taking ownership for it, because I think systematically, the Borough, as, as, you know, our engineer and Public Works looks in and inspects, they can actually develop a comprehensive plan in terms of where and how they would begin the process of repair and put it in kind of an orderly way and apply for grants. And we do have, you know, not many municipalities yet in Pennsylvania have stormwater. We're ahead of the Stormwater Authority. We are ahead of the curve in that we've had a Stormwater Authority now for a few years. This is in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, so we have environmental responsibility here. And I would just say, from a personal standpoint, as a property owner, I don't live near this Stevens Run, but there are property owners that can't afford sidewalk repair. And can you imagine if part of the wall fell in near their property and they were responsible for six figures? I just think that's, they would be shocked, I think there would be people shocked to learn that they are responsible for that. I just, I think it needs to be managed. I think it's bigger than we, bigger than a breadbasket. We need to address it, and I think we need to do it in a comprehensive way. So I, for one, and I haven't, I haven't talked to you, but I'm hoping that you're comfortable with this, but I think it's really the purview of the Borough. My thoughts.
I don't think I'm overstepping, and I think that's the position of the Stormwater Authority as well.
Do you actually believe that we'd be getting into litigation with home, or the property owners over the taking ownership?
I would anticipate that if, not everything would go smoothly in that regard. I mean, again, it's a public entity taking private property rights. And trust me, when you start doing that, property owners are going to believe, and properly so, that they're losing something of value.
They're going to have construction on their, in the backyard and...
Yeah, I mean, the hard thing for me is, I think, this is not uniform, so it almost has to be, I've got to, I mean, it almost has to be on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
See, that's something the Borough could look at then and take that into consideration in terms of...
And maybe, you know...
Exactly.
I mean...
What's at greater risk now? What can be maintained? Three to five years, what's for the...
Sure, sure.
So what I'm suggesting is, the first thing is that we have a policy. You guys think we should take ownership or not? If you don't want to take ownership, then we got to go down a completely different path. If you do think we should take ownership, then we have to do, like Swiss Reason said, start looking at each parcel. What we would do is, we would come up with a game plan on, and it's hit the worst ones first, the ones we think that are in imminent failure here. So we would take a look at those individual parcels, then we talk to the property owners. Swiss Reason was right, we would have to do the whole appraisal process, but from the few property owners that I talked to, they kind of, the indication I got was they already think that the Borough owns it.
Right.
And they really don't want this wall, because they know to replace it themselves is going to cost themselves hundreds of thousands of dollars that they don't have. And sometimes the wall's worth more than the property itself, so they're just not, simply not going to do it. So they would, I think there's going to be several property owners, and Swiss Reason said, it's probably not going to be across the board that everybody's just willing to sign this over to the Borough, but I would, I would venture a guess that there are several property owners that are more than willing to allow the Borough to take ownership of this, just because of the costs associated with maintaining it otherwise.
And we should understand, because there's a huge distinction. We, and again, it's you thinking about what our government duties are and so forth. By ownership, we're certainly, that is one of the areas that we are liable. We create, we, we would be essentially buying liability. Now, there is a, you know, a larger public purpose to do that and so forth, but please understand that that's one of the, I mean, you can't sue the government, but there are certain areas, limited areas that you can. And one of it is property that the government owns that has not been properly, I mean, there's a pretty big responsibility that comes with that.
But we're also responsible for this helping safety and welfare.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
And this, to me, is a big, you know...
Absolutely.
And just from an aesthetic standpoint, just looking at it without the dollars, when I look to see, you know, the work that was done by our Public Works team, that's really quite attractive in terms of a wall, you know, in terms of what they did. And so there's opportunities there to really improve.
And there's three different pictures that Patty's referring to, one of which was done by the Gettysburg Interlude Project grant funds. But one of them is ironic that we just had the presentation for, about the Emergency Management Coordinator and that declaration where there was an emergency, this is one of those cases where the wall, it's that top-right picture, the wall fell in, and we had to act immediately, where we had to react, and we didn't have time to start getting bids and things like that. We had to put the wall back up.
Right, and, you know, whether, not everybody's going to find, you know, the new gravity block system aesthetic, right? I mean, I remember when that collapsed, it was 2019, and a gentleman came to the council at that time, it was before I was elected, and said that we, as a historic town, we have a responsibility to rebuild the wall with the historic rocks with, like, artisanal masons, right? Like, that's not, you know, a sound solution for this channel that has a very utilitarian purpose. We need to move a ton of water here. Like, we don't, we're not going to, you know, bid this slowly over 10 years till we find the right mason to use antique rocks and, you know, whatever.
And also, and Stevens Run is, is really... And also, and Stevens Run is, is really a capricious body of water, you know? I mean, there are times where it's bone dry and other times when the water level rises. And we know about the flood that happened, what, 15 years ago or more? I mean, within a half hour, people were, had lost their cars, they had, you know, four feet of water in their basement, so it's really, it's really not a recreational body of water, it's really to be able to move that water out and it goes and ultimately empties into the Chesapeake Bay.
There was a storm in 2020 and Charles shot a video, he went down there and the water, it only rained for about an hour and a half, but the water came up so fast it crested the new Susan Knogel Bridge and it was shooting straight up through the holes in the manhole covers with such pressure.
Which is right there, you can see the Susan Knogel Bridge, that lower left, the blue bridge there, near...
So the water came up eight feet in an hour.
Yeah.
And if I could say one thing about the masonry, so I come from a family of masons, I tended masons when I grew up, I have half a dozen or more masons still in my family. These guys do outstanding work and to build these things whenever they did, for them to last this long is pretty impressive. That being said, they weren't designed to the proper retaining wall standards, which is why they're kind of falling over. To do a mason retaining wall is not easy. It takes tiebacks and there's just not space for tiebacks to today's standards. So it probably would never be able to pass code with a masonry wall. It would have to be some type of mason cladding with a real concrete reinforced retaining wall behind it. So it would be, it would be extremely difficult to do anything other than the gravity wall systems that we're proposing.
One last question on this, does the channel represent any sort of public right-of-way? Do we own rights to use it, to move water? I mean, what is this legal status?
So this comes back to what Swiss Reesman said earlier, it's almost a case-by-case scenario. There's two places where clearly we have the ownership, actually three, one of them right there along the alley that failed, Bream Alley we were already talking about, so that one's clear, we're doing that with the municipal authority, whenever they do their interceptor. There's also another little channel, it's a Long Coon Alley, that over, the county parcel mapping calls it Adams, as if it's owned by Adams County. So there is one there that does not look like it's privately owned. Aside from that, a lot of these places, just like you mentioned earlier, that the property lines go out to the center of the street. It's really, it, case by case, there's so many different scenarios, but there are like a few that it's clear that the borough already does kind of own it. And I would suggest, one of the things that I'm concerned about, you know, because we don't really know a lot of these places where we own it or not, and maybe if we do take ownership, we're accepting some liability, but are, do we have liability now? If a wall fails and something falls in, we don't know that we don't have any liability now, you know? So it's kind of like, it's one of those things where there's places where we need to get to them sooner than later.
Yeah, what would that timeline be? I think we should take ownership, some of the more critical spots. How quickly should we be moving on this?
Our structural engineers would like to do it tomorrow. They're that imminent of failure. We don't have a crystal ball, we don't know if it's, there's already walls that we know in 2019 that failed. There's other ones that are way past what Pandot would suggest that we can, we can do anything with. We are, they're already thinking about ways that we can potentially put some shoring up just to buy us some time. There is a permitting process, if it's not an emergency, like we talked about earlier, if it's an emergency, we can go in and fix it right away without permits. If it's not an emergency, we gotta go through the permitting process, we would try to group them together and get one permit. The reality is, I would say it's not gonna happen this year. If there's a policy, first of all, that we developed that says we're gonna take ownership, then we start looking at some of those sections where we wanna actually get the ownership, are we gonna create a right-of-way, talk to the property owners, go through the appraisal process, then we do a design, come up with a way to fund it, it's gonna be next year at best. And I wouldn't be even surprised if it ends up being in two years. And so we're, we're kind of playing with fire until then.
Do you have a list of priorities?
Yes.
Which ones are the priority?
Yeah, so a lot of the ones that you see on the pictures right here today in the slideshow are some of those priority locations. Of course, we showed you some of those for that reason. But yes, we do have a list of priorities. The one that I think that the structural engineers are the most concerned about, there's one next to the East Middle Street, I'm sorry, West Middle Street, and then there's also one right along Water Street. Those are the two that I think they're the most worried about.
That right there is priority.
Yes, this one here is the West Middle Street priority. And then the other one is, is the concrete wall, there's a tree, if you wanna keep going through the slides, it'll jump out at me. That one, right there.
I'm in favor of borough taking ownership as well. I do, the only thing that I have a question is, you just mentioned, you know, if it was an emergency, we wouldn't have to wait on permitting. Who can declare it an emergency? Because in my mind, one to two, I think you said inches, is average and we're over eight to 12 inches, why can't we just declare some of these clearly? Let me look at it. Why can't it be an emergency? Why are we waiting for an emergency to happen?
It's a great minds' think-alike, because I asked the same question. Isn't this kind of already an emergency?
It's an emergency right now.
And the answers I got back was no.
The damage is gonna, and it's not just that one lot of whoever owns that one parcel, it's going to cause damage to other parts of the borough, including parts that the borough already owns. So it's an emergency now.
Right, yeah, I kind of, I kind of agree with you.
Who can declare that?
I'm not, I think, I think that would have to be a conversation with DEP, who is the permitting authority here. And if they were okay with it, then I guess we go back through, just like the presentation we had earlier and create a declaration where we don't have to go through that process.
Just, I've heard from a few of you here, Mr. Bales, do you have a strong feeling?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't think we can put this on the individual homeowners, I think that's, I mean, that could bankrupt somebody, you know? So I think as a community, we have to take on this together. And I don't know if declaring an emergency immediately would be the best. It would help get things done faster, but we, I don't know if we could get the proper bids out and get the grants that we needed in that time and, you know, so if...
If you're doing an emergency, you're not gonna get a grant unless FEMA somehow gets on board with you. Usually, the way those types of things were, and we went through this in Jonas most recently, Winter Storm Jonas, where it was declared at the state level and then ultimately FEMA reimbursed the borough sixteen some thousand dollars for the extraordinary costs that we had to incur at the front end to clean up that mess. I think it would be tough, Chad, maybe you can, I think it would be tough if we went the route of declaring this an emergency that we'd get reimbursed.
Yeah, I would say that probably accurate. And the other thing is, a lot of the grants, and we even struggled getting grants for our Culp's Runstream restoration, which had a clear environmental improvement. Whenever you're cladding streams like this, the grantors don't necessarily want to fund those projects, they want to have this environmentally friendly thing, and a clad stream isn't environmentally friendly. They want you to lay back the floodplains and remove the legacy soils and turn it into its pre-developed state, which means bulldozing houses and it's just not realistic.
Ms. Sanders?
Yeah, thank you for what you presented. I feel like we're one natural disaster away from a lot of these collapsing. I've lived here all my life and I remember the channel on Springs Avenue, being afraid of it, just walking to school, because it was in disrepair 40 years ago. I think it's important that we do something right and we get it right the first time and that it's consistent, that all the channels get done at the same time or as quickly as possible within a reasonable timeframe.
So would you be in favor of taking ownership?
I would, yeah, absolutely.
Mrs. Butterfield?
I think we really have to, because there are places that it's not just aesthetics, it's a real danger. I'm thinking the Silk Mill Apartments and how they collapsed in the last hundred-year flood. So there are places that it's more important and that there is a danger, so I think we have to move on it.
I'm in agreement, so we should move forward with the policy to take ownership. Okay. And then was there a second question after that, Chad?
I believe that's really what we needed for now. There will be follow-up questions, I guess I'll get with Charles afterwards and between you and I and Harry, we can start figuring out who is going to take the first stab at developing that policy, a written policy, and then I would assume that that's gonna come before council or vote. You know, right now we're taking a straw vote at a workshop meeting and that'll be a more formal vote on that, I presume, at an upcoming meeting. Once we get that approved, then we would go to the step of looking at each individual property and determine what it takes to get these in the right way, whatever it takes.
And I think, I would just say, I think once you develop that comprehensive action plan, I think conveying that, obviously through the press, but also stormwater management has a good way of communicating with property owners and I think that they would be really helpful, so.
Thank you all. That takes us on to the Gettysburg Welcome Center, Mr. Whitmore.
Okay, well, with this, as you all should be aware, we received, quite we being borough in conjunction with Main Street, we received quite a bit of money to proceed with the project. There was, I guess, question regarding the process, there's an issue with the parcel in that it's what's considered a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, it's too small based on the current zoning regulation, district it's located within. That's not an unusual circumstance, there is a variance procedure that is provided in the ordinance to allow the zoning hearing board to permit development on-site. It just has to be, I believe that, determined, generally it's like in keeping with the character of the surrounding properties. That way, this provides a method then that a, the subdivision land development plan can be approved conditionally, condition being approval of variance to the zoning hearing board. This should be able to be on track by May. So that's all, that's all I really have for that update.
Mr. Gable, is there anything we need to address about this?
I don't think there's anything really that the council needs to act on, I think this is just kind of more of an informational item that obviously took a front burner within the last two weeks when the borough was successful at finding the construction money.
Have we had any communication from the federal government as to when funds might be made available?
Not yet. Senator Casey's senior staff indicated that we should get communication by the end of April at the latest, so, about a month, yes.
Well, I just wanna, just really drive home for everybody here and everybody watching, this is a major gift for us, was it 1.272 million?
Correct.
In a federal appropriations bill at a time when the federal government is struggling to even agree on whether they should buy pens or not, they agreed in a bipartisan manner that this subject is worthwhile and that what we're trying to do here in Gettysburg is worth funding. And we owe a debt of gratitude to both senators as well as Congressman Joyce for advocating for this money on our behalf. And I really wanna, even though she's not here, I really wanna shout out to Jill Sellers with Main Street Gettysburg, who just went to the mat on this one and brought this home for us. So, thank you to everybody involved.
Can I just add something to that?
Yes.
And that is, yeah, I just wanna add my congratulations to Jill and to Charles Gable, the borough manager. This is really a good example of how Main Street Gettysburg acts as an economic arm for the borough in a way that we could not do that on our own. And in terms of getting funding coming in from, at the state level, the federal level, and being able to have it come in through Main Street, that's really important. So again, congratulations on that, 1.2 million, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to new business and we are going to discuss temporary reservation of metered parking spaces for museums.
So, we've had several meetings now where we've had public comments regarding temporary reservations of public parking meters. I would just comment from our public comment beginning of the meeting that places of worship are still permitted to reserve meters. What was different now is that we've moved into a realm where we no longer are permitting applicants to self-administer those meter bags. So, it's just an unfortunate situation we find ourselves in because of circumstances change from time to time within the borough. So, just to be even-handed across all sectors, just like we no longer are allowing self-administering for museums, same goes for churches, because churches were also self-administering their meter bags. And to be consistent, staff has communicated as is represented in our public comments tonight.
So to clarify there, staff will be placing meter bags in front of places of worship?
If those places of worship go through the current permitting process, yes.
And given that those meters during worship time are not enforced, is that correct? Is there a charge for those?
On Sundays till one, is that right?
Correct.
So would we be charging for those permits?
That's a question that we have for you.
That's, that's, right, I mean, that's currently how the ordinance is written.
Right, well, this is a secondary question. So, the discussion tonight is for reservations for museum spaces, but we've now sort of gone tangential to that and to how we would administer spaces for places of worship. It could be argued, I suppose, that the permitting fees that we are assessing for, you know, bus parking or any reserved parking that's allowed currently is based on loss of revenue, but that we are, since we're not losing revenue during hours of worship...
On Sundays.
Right.
But if you're talking about, the Good Friday was mentioned.
Yeah, that was a, I wasn't aware that that was a change we had made.
It's not.
I didn't think it was.
We've never allowed parks?
No, we have.
We have?
No, we always enforced on Good Fridays. The holiday observed is Easter Sunday.
Okay.
Right, we have, I mean, we have specific holidays cited in the ordinance as days when parking is not enforced, and I don't think that, like, Good Friday or Monday Thursday was ever on that list.
It used to be Good Friday, prior to enforcement on Sundays. When the enforcement started on Sundays, it was changed to Easter.
And how long ago was that?
2017, 2018.
I think it was just a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
I think, so, it was prior to me, but I think it wasn't actually changed with council and then when I came on, it was changed. It was just voted on, I would bet, 2020, 2021?
We worked on that ordinance together, as I recall, so, yeah. Time has a way of passing, but it wasn't that long ago.
For charging on Sundays or for Good Friday?
Enforcement, the holiday that you're observing is actually Easter.
Right.
So, in the labor, give you a little backstory, in the labor contract, Easter Sunday is observed as the official holiday. However, because Easter always falls on a weekend, staff observes that on Good Friday. So Friday, this coming Friday, for example, the offices will be closed because their labor grievance observe Easter on Good Friday. That always was an issue as it relates to enforcement of public parking spaces, because you have the dichotomy of which day is actually the holiday. To back his point, council rectified that a couple of years ago, because council now has a policy where we do collect meter revenue on Sunday, that is, makes sense now that Easter Sunday is the observed holiday.
I have a question from Ms. Thistle, and I do think it's wrong that they're taking that away from you for churches on Sunday, so I'd like that to change. But can they self-administer churches for like funerals?
No.
They can't do that anymore either?
No. Which we've actually always placed them for funerals.
Well, I think, this is not common sense to me. If they've always done it that way, I think we should continue to do it. And I think they brought up great points about freedom of religion and what we value in this, this country and it's Sunday, we're not charging, and we started doing Sunday enforcement too, but after, what, one o'clock? The churches should be allowed to be able to park and they should be able to self-administer on Sunday morning. So I just want to publicly say that. And with the museum question, I guess we'll get to that. But thank you for coming and speaking tonight.
And one other question, if borough staff is off on holidays, then that means the police department has to do the bagging?
That would be correct.
That's correct.
So you know there's a potential they're not going to get bagged then. The guys are busy and they're not going to be able to get there.
Sure, we understand that. I guess we'll cross our fingers and hope we don't have crime sprees on Easter morning there at seven in the morning, but I'm being a little glib and I apologize. I see the look on your face there. I understand that you have priorities that your department has to be allocated for. I totally understand that. There was a time not too long ago where all parking enforcement was the domain of the police department and so it would have been the police responsibility then as well. Okay, so we have two, well, two separate questions here. So the first one is what we want to do about the allocation of meter bags for places of worship during unregulated and unenforced hours. Thoughts?
Go ahead, Patty. Did you have something, Patty?
Well, I actually, I wrote down, you know, where's our common sense? I wrote that down earlier when the young woman was speaking about, was it St. Francis, I guess? You know, I just, I think at a certain point, we have to look at what is common sense.
Common sense has been getting us into trouble, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think there's older people and people with disabilities. I just.
It's an issue of the equitable enforcement of the ordinance as it's written. And staff for a long time has been written here in this history, has employed common sense. However, litigously, the borough finds itself in a different environment currently.
I'm just wondering if we can reach a compromise here in terms of equity and common sense?
I mean, yeah, I hear, I hear and appreciate everything that everybody's said and I always appreciate when public comment is made. The argument could be made, there's more than one thing, there's more than one freedom in this country. It's not just freedom of religion, so the argument could be made from others that this is freedom of speech, this is freedom of expression, this is freedom of my, running my business how I want to run it. I think if we're going to tell one person they can't bag, they can't bag and remove their bags, then it has to go across the board. And maybe the fee structure of that reserving, paying to reserve said bags also pays for us having a staff member to place and remove said bags during the times when it was requested on that reserve bag application. I just think we have to do it across the board. If you do it for one, you have to do it for all of them. If you say, no, not you, but these are okay, that's where we are in the first place, this other. So, in my opinion, the reserve bag fee needs to probably be raised so that we can pay for said person to go and remove the bags and place the bags. Because if you're going to do it for one, you need to do it for all. If you're going to tell one person they can't put the bags there themselves and can't remove the bags themselves, then no one can do it. Because then it, it's not equitable for everybody.
Is there an issue too in terms of, on Sunday mornings, people can park for free up until one o'clock in the borough? In part to allow the houses of worship to allow people to go and worship. It sounds like an issue might be accessibility, having parking near a church so that somebody who has mobility issues can get in. And I remember a few years ago, the church across the street, which I can't remember what church it is, what is it?
Trinity Church of Christ.
They contacted me, I remember, and asked, they had a handicap parking spot down the street.
It's a public space that happens to be next to the church.
But they were using that.
It's not guaranteed use by the church.
But we did give them a spot in front.
We, we provided a public parking space for ADA. It's not for the church, but the church did request it.
I walked up there, I actually parked in the Unitarian lot and walked up and it was the winter and I imagined what it would be like if I was 30 years older and using a walker. And that is actually a little steep incline. And so we talked about it and we provided a space out there so that somebody who has accessibility issues can park there. And I think they swapped and gave a space to the staff because it was a borough staff spot out there.
Correct.
And that just seemed to me like a logical, common sense kind of way to handle it. And so, I would like us to kind of, I understand what everyone's saying, but how can we reach a compromise here that's both logical, equitable, and common sense? You know, is there, can we reach some sort of compromise?
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying as well and that's a whole other topic. There's not enough handicap spaces in this borough. I've said that before several times. There's not enough handicap parking spaces in the borough. But the reserve bag is for reserved parking. It's not about, in my mind, if we're charging during those hours or not for the public. It's still reserved spaces. So, for example, Sunday mornings when we're not charging, when there's no bag on the meter, people are going to park there, free. It's a reserved bag. It's a reserved parking opportunity.
So, to remember Lawson's point, I mean, council certainly could add ADA spaces, one or two, next to each place of worship throughout the borough. You could do that. Now, that would be different than reserving them because they're not for a specific church, they're public spaces, but they just happen to be located near places of worship.
But of course, that's the power of the borough. The borough, what is the service that you're providing? You're providing public parking. So, you need to think of it within that context. That's where your power is.
So, what if, I'm just spitballing here, what if we created a new bag that said, doesn't say no parking, it says, please reserve for people with disabilities and we allowed places of worship to administer those during unenforced hours? It's not a parking prohibition, it's saying, it's not saying no parking, it's saying, please reserve these spaces for people with disabilities.
It was my understanding that there was an issue with, there was some consternation with the government not administering a police power.
This would not be a parking prohibition, it would be a request for courtesy. Maybe it's assigned next to the meter, maybe it's, I don't know.
Technically, people can park in front of the church and go to the restaurant and be a jerk, right?
Yep.
So it's, we're really not, it's not enforceable in a sense, it's just courtesy.
That's right.
So I think churches should be able to do that. It's really not an enforceable thing and we're not losing revenue.
Right.
And I just go, think about how many, you know, we're all going to get old someday and we might not even have disabilities. I don't know.
Having.
My heart's with these guys over here.
Five months ago and having used a walker, I can tell you that I definitely have a newer appreciation for.
Sure.
For mobility issues.
Sure.
They're real, so.
Okay, so, do we want to create a carve-out in the policy for places of worship during unenforced hours?
Who?
I hear a no.
I think that sounds reasonable.
And who is bagging it? Who is signing it?
That would be the carve-out, right?
Who's putting it on? That's, it all, I have no prob, let me be clear, I have no issue with the church having what they've always had, but it's about the administration of the bags.
Agreed.
That's where it is.
Yeah, that's the question I'm asking, is do we want to create a carve-out in the policy for that or no? So I hear a no, I heard a, two yeses?
Yes, carve it out?
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. I think, I think something should be put in place for the house of worship. I think this is still, it's still going to get difficult as we're going to have different rules and standards for the hotels and the museums and the churches and the restaurants and I, but maybe that's, I don't know if that's the best course, but I can understand your comments completely as well. And so, I think something has to be fleshed out.
So, what I'm hearing from a plurality of council, did you have anything you wanted to add, Mrs. Butterfield?
No, just that I think continuity, the words that Peter used and Chad used, continuity is important here. But see, I'm of the generation where Sunday was different.
Sure.
And it's just hard for me to say, well, it's not anymore. So I'm trying to be open-minded about this, but continuity, fairness for all, we can't cherry pick and say, good for you, bad for you.
But to that point, Mrs. Butterfield, even when it was free parking on Sunday, if they want reserved spots.
Yep.
That are not free and open to everybody on Sunday mornings, they've got to go through the process and we have to figure that out for them. What fee it is, I don't know, but a reserved spot is a reserved spot. And we can't tell one person you can't do it, another person you can, one person you can bag, another person you can't. It's got to be across the board and I don't think it's just going to stop at freedom of religion. I'm saying that right now. Other people will come out.
Staff would caution against creating a concierge parking program for the borough.
Yeah.
Heading in that direction.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that's the central question here, right? What we've been wrestling with, with parking reservations for well over a year now, is a question of equity, right? So it was brought to our attention that people who need these reservations were not able to do it. And so we decided we're going to try something. The first attempt wasn't great, we're trying it again. And then it became a question of, well, it's the same service being administered to one person over here, but it's being administered completely different to another person over here at completely unique pricing, right? So now that, that's going to get us into the conversation about museum parking. Concierge services is a great way of describing that. You know, what you're, we're basically being asked to do is to come up with a complex matrix of who gets the same service at what prices based on the use of a parcel and I don't really know that that is our function here. Our function here is to interpret what we think the best interest of the voters and the taxpayers is and then support our staff as they come up with sound policy on how to administer the ordinance. So, let's table for a moment the discussion about places of worship and let's dig into the meat of the PBS here on temporary reservation of parking meters for museums, but we will try to get some forward momentum on both issues tonight. I'm cognizant of the hour and we do still have other issues on the agenda we need to discuss tonight, so I'm going to keep this conversation moving at a plucky pace. Mr. Gable, can you lead us a little bit through the document you've prepared here? I asked Charles to put this together. There is, there were a lot of questions being asked of me by members that seemed incongruous and perhaps a bit confounded, so I wanted a comprehensive history of how we got here today so that we can discuss this, so. Would you mind kind of walking us through?
Oh, sure, I'll try. Backing, we have to tag team with you here. So, this was, the first part of this is what we think staff, or staff is recommending that we think council should consider is, we had lots of public comment in recent weeks about specifically a museum owner wanting to know why they cannot administer the way they have done in the past. Based on the, the comment about common sense earlier tonight, there was a time when staff thought they were administering some common sense and had some back and forth with several operators of museums. So a carve-out was created for them and there was three in town that utilized reserved, self-administered reserved parking spaces for buses specifically. Civil War Tales, Gettysburg Diorama and Shriver House Museum, since 2016 or 17, I think it was, were operating under this provision that staff thought was reasonable and trying to accommodate museums who have identified to staff, they have a different business model that's say a high-revenue business like a, a large restaurant, for example, or maybe a 600-seat theater. So, a carve-out was provided to them. That history is here for your review. I don't know how in-depth you want to get into this, but we have the permits as an exhibit, which I don't know, we need to get into the actual permits that were issued and when and things of that sort. But based on our current environment in the borough about equity, staff has, has to pivot until we get better direction on what council wants to do, which is why we've communicated with the museums and the churches about, this is what the ordinance says, so this is what we have to do.
All right. So I know that this has been in the forefront of all of our minds for the last several weeks, so I hope everybody's had a chance to review this document and I would like to open this discussion amongst council. Gut reactions.
You don't want my gut reaction. It goes for a lot of things that I believe in the borough. Just because it's been that way in the past, doesn't mean that it's the most efficient way, an economic way for the borough to operate. It's, some of those things have, you know, we've got to move on, we've got to move forward. Some of those things have caught, from the past, have caused problems from other local businesses complaining about things. It's, as we've heard as well, and I forget which meaning it was, that we're not supposed to be having citizens do that anyway. It's, it is a tough situation. I understand and respect everybody's desire and need to make their businesses as successful as possible, absolutely. But I also am a big advocate for everything needs to be across-the-board fair for everyone. And when we pick and choose what types of organizations and what types of businesses are doing what. And that's why unfortunately, we are where we are today.
Yeah, I sort of agree. I think the situation we found ourselves in last year with the question of reservations for bus parking. I, I think the situation we found ourselves in last year with the question of, of reservations for bus parking revealed a couple of open questions about how we administer this, this ordinance. One had to do with how we identify qualifications for who, who can apply for these permits, why one type of enterprise is allowed to and another type is not. I think that was a conversation worth having. One local entrepreneur came to me frequently and said, how come it is that your employer is allowed to do this in exactly this manner, but my business is not? And I think that's a valid question, I do. Whenever the ordinance was written, carve outs were made for places of public assembly like theaters. But times change, the needs change, the, the, um, the way we use this public asset is changing. So, uh, however, times, another way times have changed and the, the way that we have used this public assets changed is we have over the last decade, the Gettys, the borough of Gettysburg has pivoted from a position of treating parking as sort of tangential to life here to rather treating it as a very important source of revenue for our borough. Like I don't think this is a secret to anybody here. Parking constitutes 23, 24% of our revenues for the year. If it was not for that money coming out of parking, which is essentially some of the only money we get from the visitors who come here, that money would have to come out of the only other source we really have, which is property tax. So what we've done is we have prioritized the allocation of a public asset, which is street parking. And we've leveraged it as a way to invest in a, an aggressive and forward looking capital improvement plan. The way we allocate first response services that are adequate for all of the visitors here. I don't think anybody up here would disagree with me that parking is not just a public asset here and an important sense, source of revenue for us. It's a crucial source of revenue for us. So if we were to administer the ordinance equitably, which I think is really important, that we're not making special rules for individuals, under the, you know, the model that had been in place for museums, and I'd like to point out that these three museums who are taking advantage of this program are all for-profit enterprises. They were getting unlimited use of three, three metered spaces for $150 a year. The, the loss of revenue that that hypothetically represents for the borough is not insubstantial. We've heard one museum say that they're expecting 35 buses in the month of March at two or say three spaces. That represents somewhere between $800 and $1,000 worth of revenue for the borough just in the month of March. But what we've been doing for, apparently since 2016 or 17, is unlimited use of those spaces for $150 a year. We've been subsidizing a for-profit enterprise. Which is fine if that's what everybody wants to do here, I'm just saying. But why would we extend that just to museums and not any other enterprise in the, in the borough? Why wouldn't we say that any, but any business, regardless of its nature, could have unlimited use of three parking spaces for $150 a year? Well, we don't do that because we treat pub, public parking as a public asset that generates important revenue, that's why. So there's some of the background there and I really need to hear people's input.
Right, I mean, I've already spoken a lot, but I will speak smart. I think that, yes, it is for public and it is our revenue. But if someone is willing to pay exactly what it would have been, filled all day long, then we have that to think about.
For the public, what would that cost in some of those areas? About a hundred dollars a month?
It depends on the usage and it depends on the meters. Some of our meters are enforced on a 12-hour limit, some are enforced on a three-hour limit. So some places you can only park for up to three hours, some places you can park up to 12. So if it's a 12-hour meter, you have to pay for the whole day. Or, do I have that correct or am I backwards?
You always have to pay for the whole day.
Always have to pay for the whole day. We have to bag before that. So can you, can you put this in words?
Yeah, so the three-hour meters, we have to bag it before that three-hour limit because if somebody parks there, if you want it at 10 o'clock, somebody could park there at nine o'clock if it's not bagged and then it wouldn't be available for you. So we have to bag it prior to that three-hour mark bec, if it's a three-hour meter. The same with the 12-hour meters, except the 12-hour meters, um, you know, they start at 8:00 AM. So if you need a bus at 1:00 in the afternoon, we still need to bag that at 8:00 because somebody could buy that meter for 12 hours.
Conundrum.
So I have a question for the parking department. Are you short-staffed? Is that, are you saying in any way that you could use more attendance?
We could always use more.
Yeah, because it seemed like that was sort of spawned.
We are a very short, we are a very small department for the work that we do.
I understand.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, if you don't, the public doesn't, might not know this. There's only two full-time parking enforcement officers, administrator and the parking manager who's largely consumed by dealing with irate people getting parking tickets. And so it takes the better part of your data to manage those multiple calls. So it's, her hours out on the street would be limited. In addition to that, we only have two part-time with limited hours. And it's not a 24/7 department, which is why we, earlier we would say when we're not staffed, that the duties would have to fall to the police department.
I do agree that we should try, we, we do need to make this as equitable as possible. We have to protect from litigation. We have to make it equitable for all these different types of businesses. So I don't know if rank ordering is the best. Like I said earlier, there's, there's, and there is gonna be more types of businesses that are gonna, you know, want their fair shake. So I'm not saying that I have the answer in front of me. It says we don't have the software to do partial days. You know, is there software out there that we can look into? And I understand that it could, like, the bus parking can be cost prohibitive. Because, you know, I'm not sure what high revenue business exactly means because in relation to what, like, in relation to a mom and pop store, in relation to Walmart, I mean, or. So that's, you have to have a reference point. But, yeah, I don't know.
Right, I, I also want to point out too that at one point in the past months, we had somebody from the public say, well, you know, shouldn't we extend the same courtesy to every type of business? You know, the accountant who wants to have a space during tax season or whatever. When we're talking about these reservations for buses, we're talking about giving up two to three spaces in order to move 50 people into a business, not giving up a space to move one person into a business. I think it's an apples and oranges discussion. It's in all of our interest to get these large vehicles in with large groups of people. It supports all of the enterprises, including my, the one I work at, that, you know, that depend on that, uh, the flexibility and the ability to bring large groups of people is, is an economic driver for all of us here. So it, it, it's not the same conversation, I think, when we say, would we extend this to, you know, a salon or a, an accountant or, you know, fill in the blank? So are folks content with the policy as the parking department is exercising it currently? That's the question.
I think unless and until we have more staff, which doesn't sound like it's gonna happen anytime soon, it's almost, it almost has to stay in place. I mean, there's no way to stretch the police department any further if they, you know, should run out of people to go and take bags off or put bags on. And it seems to be the most consistent thing to do.
I'm sorry, can you clarify what, what position is you're taking here?
That we need to keep the policy in place as was recommended by borough manager and the parking department.
So you're advocating against people self-administering?
Well, we, yeah, we can't differentiate. I mean, we really can't pinpoint certain businesses to be permitted to either administer bags or, or remove the bags at different times. I think that puts an onus on a citizen that is, um, to me would cause some li, I would think would be a liability. Like, when growing up, I never saw a single citizen touch those bags because it was clear that they were, it was police, uh, policed by our local police at the time. And I, I never knew that citizens were taking bags on and off until I joined the council. It didn't, I wasn't aware of that. So thank you for sharing that. I just don't think it would be in the interest of any business to do it, really.
This document, Charles, that you put together, is your recommendation or your, just your thoughts on what we've been discussing?
It's a hot, hot topic, I'm not recommending anything. This is all on you, I'm gonna do what you guys want to do. And I'm just being very candid. I mean, you know, Beck and I get excoriated because we're trying to be reasonable and accommodating. And once we're accommodating and reasonable to one, then someone else is in here complaining. So you, you have our recommendation as it was passed many years ago. Question is, does council want to move in a different direction?
I like, right. I, 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 I think it has.
Can see our frustration trying to administer this.
Sure, I think it has to be consistent across the board. If we're saying that this person can't administer the bags, but this person can, that's wrong. Staff needs to administer the bags. I do however, agree with Mr. Bales, we should absolutely be looking into some, some, for, going forward, some future software perhaps, uh, you know, to be able to figure out how it can be done where a group, a business could say, I just need it for the morning.
Well, so to clarify, you can already do that. The issue is, you, you already specify hours in the permit application. You have to pay for the entire day.
But that's what I meant.
And what is currently the simplest for our staff to administer is to say, okay, this is a list of meters that I need to bag this morning. And that's, you know, maybe 20 minutes of their day.
Sure.
You know, two days a week, three days a week, maybe zero days a week.
Sure.
Right, what we have now is currently a fairly low-impact system that does not eat up a ton of man-hours or, or staff hours, I should say. And when you specify in the permit application, the bus is gonna be gone by 11:30, parking staff comes and removes those bags at 11:30.
That's excellent, and I hope that they do. But if the bag, if the meter was, if the bag, if the parking space was requested for a 5:00 PM and it's being bagged at 8:00 AM, have that, have they paid for what the loss would be if those meters were open until 1:00 PM?
They're paying for the entire day.
Right, are they paying the amount that it would have been? Are we losing revenue from a meter that's bagged?
They're paying the entire day for the value of the meter.
You're asking currently.
Currently.
Right. They're paying the entire value for the meter, potential earnings for the day.
The borough is not losing any revenue, but the businesses on that street are because they're bagged and they can't park there, even though the event isn't happening until 5:00 PM.
Right, other, other businesses would not be allowed to use those spaces until the vehicle shows up for the reservation, that is correct.
That's my, that's where I get to my point of, I feel like we could, should find some solution there.
So if it is, if you're requesting, if it's a three-hour meter, you're requesting it be bagged at five, that you need it at five, we would actually be bagging that one at two.
Great.
Because that's the three hour.
But paying for.
We wouldn't need to do it at eight. It's those 12-hour meters, you have to do it at eight because it's that 12-hour.
But when you bag at two, you're paying from 2:00 to 8:00 o'clock then, right?
No, you're paying the whole day.
That's.
Okay.
But then, you know, one ounce.
That's, that's where the programming in our online permit system, it, you can't create a concierge.
Yeah.
And I am.
Permit request online.
I have been in talks with them and they are always constantly revamping their system to make things work. But I, I envision, I, I'm not sure how that would quite work because sometimes we do have no bags that go on, on a day. But sometimes we have eight different places that bags need to go on. So now this one needs to go on at 8:00 AM and this one needs to go on at 1:00 and this one needs to go on at 2:00 and this one comes off at 4:00. This one comes off at 6:00, this one goes on at 5:00. Like, we don't have the staff to do that and things are going to be messed up. Like, that's a lot to put on. And then that officer is getting a private property call, just like the chief said, he doesn't have it. I only have one staff member at a time on duty, almost at all times. So if they're trying to put bags on, they get called to a private property, they get called somewhere else, um, you know, they can't get that bag on at that time, then somebody parks there and then that's not available for that bus or whatever that was.
Right.
Which the simplicity of all day makes that a lot easier for any of the officers to understand.
Understood. Can you speak from the podium, please?
Yes. Hi, I'm Linda, it's you, I own the upper crust. I just want to give you an example of what happened today. We had two buses, it was set up for 1:00, they were both supposed to be here. So, um, one group, two buses. I appreciate your pilot program. So for one bus, it would be about four spots I'd have to rent. And with this new pilot program, it's $18 per space. So they're, they're for about one hour, that's two buses. I would have to rent eight spaces at $18 for one hour. That would be $144 for one hour, if my math is right, right? 18 times 8, is that 144? Right, 144. It's cost prohibitive for one hour. So if it's safety and traffic control that you're after, it is cost prohibitive. It doesn't make sense.
To clarify, what we were after was leaving things exactly as they were. You could safely drop off on the square and park for free at the fire department.
Right, I'm sorry, Matt.
The pilot program was instituted at your insistence. So we gave you what you asked for, which was the same thing that other businesses like mine, the one I work at.
Matt, no one has paid $18 per space like ever to reserve. Nancy paid $150 per space for a year. The hotels, hold on. The hotels pay $150 a month. You're charging me $18 per space for an hour? It's cost prohibitive. I'm sorry?
That is exactly what the majestic pays.
When did they pay that?
Whenever we reserve spaces, we pay $18 per meter per day.
It's $150 per year, per space. When did you start doing that?
Not for us. As far as I know.
That was for the museum.
Right.
$150.
What's that?
I think the $150 for the year is for those three museums, is that correct?
So theaters pay one, they pay $18 per day, per space?
They do, and anyone moving furniture, every permit I have has been, it's, it's $18 in the first block. It could be $24 on the square or down the second, third block of Baltimore, it's like $12. So it, it depends on the hourly rate of the meter, the cost of it.
So if you're after safety, are you saying, I mean, the police chief said what is safest is to pull in front of the restaurant into those parking spaces and park and unload. It's the safest. It's safest for traffic control also. But for me to have to pay $144 for one hour is just cost prohibitive. It doesn't make sense. I mean, the margins on the buses are so low, so. And the hotels pay for a month.
Right.
So then you don't have to worry about Nancy going out and bagging it and taking it off. It seems like the monthly rate has worked for a very long time, just options. Right now, having to pay $18 for an hour
Yep.
doesn't make sense, thank you.
All right, so I need everybody to. All right. So I need everybody to, please share their thoughts, what you want to do here, and be direct and brief, please.
While we're waiting on people to gather their thoughts, I would just go back to the pilot program that we did in the fall, labeled incorrectly. But that was the intent of that program, to create essentially a very low-cost option for large-capacity vehicles to park.
Yep.
And that was scuttled because of lots of public comment.
Yep.
We have now created another pilot program based on Ms. Tia's insistence. Now, apparently that's going nowhere, based on the comments we just heard from the podium. This is why you don't have a staff recommendation.
Right, right.
I can just add something real quick, too. I think that you have a conflict in the ordinance. Barry, you may know better. Charles points out, the one section says "may" place the bags. If you look at the, the grant or issuance of the meter bags, the term is "shall" be issued to the applicant to be used. So I think the two sections, there's, there's a conflict in the ordinance itself as well, as far as how you work the meter bags.
I, I interpret that as if they meet the criteria, they shall be granted the option to have the bags. But the administering of the bags is the part where it says "may."
Yeah, and you're correct, Charles.
I, I need to hear it from people. You need to speak, I'm sorry.
I think I've said, I've said, I've said it all night, and I've said it before I was elected, and I've said it after I was elected, that fairness is, you know, it, it, just because it was in the past doesn't mean it can still happen. And, but I also understand to, to Matt's point earlier is that our borough has changed immensely over the last 10 years. We've, you know, we have this, you know, very large restaurant within the first block of Lincoln Square. Didn't used to have that. And we don't have general pickets anymore. Where are the buses going? This problem is not going away. We have to pivot and we have to figure out a solution. And I know, I know that you all agree that we've got to figure out a solution. But I, it just makes me come back to, well, why does this person get it? Why does this person get it? Just because the ordinance was written that way a long time ago, ordinances can be changed. There were ordinances for the borough of Gettysburg that were written before any of us were born, I'll bet. And are they still that way? And why? We're a different borough than we were 10 years ago. We're a different borough than we were 20 years ago.
Yeah, I, I want to further elucidate, too, for those of you sitting here and those watching at home. When we say that parking represents a significant portion of our revenue, just so you know what we're talking about, we're talking about a minimum of $1.5 million a year, and that's not counting citations, that's just meter usage. So if we were to allow every business in town to have unfettered use of reserved spaces for $150 a year, it would decimate our budget. And the only place we can make it up is property tax. Every person in this room would feel that change.
I would submit to you that you could not legally do that anyway. You're providing public parking. You're not providing parking to various businesses and so forth. You're providing public parking. That's your government service that you're providing.
Yep.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward. These are just, these are just the narrow exceptions that you're determining are available for health, safety, concerns, and so forth. But your service is public parking for the public.
I don't think we should be self-administering. I think that hopefully we can find a more tech-savvy way to take care of the issue. So I'm not a proponent of self-administering.
All right.
I would like to find a solution to the partial parking. However, I do think if you have a metered, a metered space for 12 hours and you only need it for five, it would be great if that bag could come off and allow the rest of the public to park there, you know, or the rest of the tourists to park there with efficiency managed by someone from the parking department.
So currently, that is how it's working.
Right.
Right. So if, for example, I reserve 14 spaces on Carlisle Street for a school show, and I know the buses will be gone by 11:30 a.m., I'm paying the full daily rate on every single one of those meters, but the parking department is removing the bags at the ascribed time in my permit application, which would be 11:30 a.m., at which point those meters, even though I've paid for them the whole day, they then return to the public inventory. The issue is that if you're not using it for most of the day, and then you just need it at the end, why are you paying for all of these hours out of time?
That's where, that's one of the reasons. That's one of the things that happens.
Or, or bookending it. Why am I paying for four hours before and four hours after when I just need an hour in the middle?
That's one of the conditions. Just one. That's one of the conditions, yes.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm not hearing a lot of apposition to the policy and the ordinance as it's currently being administered. Is there anybody who would like to advocate to return to the special pricing for museums?
Keeping it at 150 for the year is what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not interested in doing that, especially after knowing that those are three for-profit museums. They're not nonprofit 501(c)(3), so that's a business, right? So how is that different than a restaurant or a theater?
Anyone else?
Just a question for clarification. So the price that businesses, the first block, businesses, hotels, restaurants, whoever's reserving these buses, they're paying based on first block. And then there's a second-block rate, and then a third-block rate. Okay.
Daily rates determined by the dynamic parking structure we have in place.
Okay.
Right. Is there any more discussion on this? I'm not seeing any. We're going to move on. We have a presentation on the concept of employing professional lobbyists to help with our grant applications. Mr. Gable?
This topic springs out of this book, which President Moon mentioned, I think it was last meeting or the meeting before. This is the $26 million capital improvement plan that council has authorized us to pursue over the next five years, ending in 2026. Now, this gets updated from time to time, so it's not a once-and-done thing. Things evolve. Give a little more clarity in the background to this. If, if you recall, I, I showed this graphic a couple meetings ago. It's a, a history of all the grants, maybe not all the grants, but a vast number of all, of the grants that the borough has applied for dating back to 2012. And then...
Folks, the room needs to come to order, please.
And then it, on the other column, it shows you what grants have been awarded or not awarded. Can see back in 2012 up through roughly 2018, 2019, the borough was very successful at being awarded grant funds. Something happened in the 2019, 2020 period where you can see there is a lot of zeros in that right-hand column based on the number of grants that we have applied for. There's been three consecutive years now where the borough has applied for the USDOT, United States Department of Transportation, RACE Grant for Construction of the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, for example. That's your 77.3 million, of course. That goes up a little bit each year based on inflation. The borough did just reapply for the next round of RACE. Each year, the RACE Grant, and we have a debrief, when, when those applicants that are not successful have an opportunity to debrief with staff in Washington as to the merits of the project that they're advocating. Each of those three rounds, the, our, our project was highly, highly ranked. It was highly recommended. I think that's the term they actually give it. And even in those debriefs, the project analysts were like, "This is a very strong project. It, it came back highly recommended. We don't, actually don't know why it wasn't funded." They actually told us that. So in an effort to not leave any stone unturned, an idea came up that we need to do, not necessarily better, but more consistent outreach to our legislature, legislature in Harrisburg and in Washington. In this case specifically, Washington, because it's a federal program. Jill Sellers, Main Street Gettysburg, who's not able to be with us this evening, built a lot of those strong relationships with the staff of Senators Casey and Fetterman, as well as with our representative Congressman Joyce, which ultimately led to the congressionally-directed funding of the Gettysburg Wellness Center. Jill Sellers and I went to Washington last January and met personally with Senator Casey, for example. Senator Casey is familiar with this program that we want to do here, the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project. But obviously, funding, it didn't quite come through. Where we're, I think we're missing is the consistency of building the relationships between Gettysburg and those folks that make those budgetary decisions in Harrisburg and Washington. It was mentioned in, in public comment before, a couple meetings ago, where the council used to meet with those folks on a regular basis. The council right here today, with I think, exception of maybe one and a half, all have day jobs. You're kind of working part-time, I think. So the council is not like councils of the past where, where you had time to go and build those relationships. So this is a proposal that the Stormwater Authority has looked at and found that this is probably something worth investing in, even if it's in for just a short term, where we employ the services of essentially a lobbyist, which is what's in front of you today. Cozen O'Connor, Public Strategies. They have a, a large staff that has intimate ties to the, the halls of Harrisburg and Washington. Some are former legislative staff members, others work in private sector. They have succe, successfully had other clients that had large funding opportunities come through, and you have their, their information in front of you. I don't want, based on the, on the hour, I was going to go into a little more detail about the specific personalities that we would be working with. But at this point, I think, I'll just turn it back to President Moon, and we can, if you, there's specific questions, I can maybe address some of those that I have highlighted here. This is something that the Stormwater Authority would be interested in, in an effort just not to leave any, any stone unturned. Because the Stormwater Authority put in a lot of time for NIFWIT funds for the Culp Stream restoration. Was it four times that was denied? So, you know, that, that's funding that we would have, rather have through grants so that we can start accumulating a nest egg to deal with our channel walls that we just spoke about earlier tonight, for example. GMA would also potentially be a partner in this. I, I know that, that Chris is our representative there. I'm not sure. I know the concept's been introduced. I don't know where...
He introduced the concept.
Yeah.
They're open to it. We didn't come to a conclusion about it.
Yeah, yeah. So the idea would be to share the cost of this consultant among those three entities, if not, certainly the borough and the Stormwater Authority, because we're all going after similar funds for similar projects. And so it would make sense for us all to partner and approach it from a united front from Gettysburg's perspective. So...
Charles, what's the total ask for the funding? So we're going to invest something and hopefully get...
The, they would want a monthly retainer, and it's, it's 6,000 a month for them to do all this work for us. Ideally, that would be cost shared between the three organizations. So, and then the other benefit to this is it's very severable. 30-day notice from either side, you could end the relationship. I would envision this to be a fairly temporary engagement, at least through the end of the year, when the, the RACE Grant, this round of RACE Grant is awarded. And then if that's successful, then that was money well-invested.
Yeah, what, my question was, the RACE Grant, is that 14 million?
The project is about 13, Chad.
13, okay. Yeah, that, that was my question.
Yeah, the grant request is around 10 million.
Okay.
I, to, to clarify, they're not writing the grants for us, but they're helping us with lobbying to folks that we need to look at us.
Right. So it's like, here's a project that they know about.
Right.
Now they need someone every week to remind them that project is there and it's worth funding.
Right. And then a question for Mr. Eastman. Do you, I know, I know, we can have lobby, the borough itself can have lobbyists, can all, but if we partner with nonprofits, are they allowed to have lobbyists?
Actually, this engagement would be specifically for Main Street Gettysburg. So they, they would be...
The contracts through Main, Main Street?
It would be through Main Street, and then those three entities would be funding that on behalf of Main Street. Yes.
Are, are 501(c)(3) is allowed to have lobbyists?
Rather not speak about somebody else's...
Gotcha. Never mind.
I, I think it's actually, from a economic standpoint, we're looking at about $2,000 a month for the borough. So we're looking at about $24,000 a year. I think that's well-spent because, as you pointed out, there's only one and a half of us here that can, you know, that would be able to, to go on a regular basis. And I, and I foresee a lobbying firm like this actually taking an elected official or two with them, because I think that's really helpful.
It is.
It really, and I, I can tell you, the partnership between Main Street, GMA, Stormwater, and the borough is really important because legislators like that, and that's what they will fund, are those types of partnerships. A number of years ago, I'm going to date myself, but a little bit over 20 years ago, when Gordon Holland was president of Gettysburg College, the borough, the college, and a few other entities, Chris Blackfeller at the Arts Council, they actually presented to the feds and to the state for money, and we received stadium funds. And actually, those entities got together, and while the college wanted to fund the renovations for the Majestic, they took the backseat for about 18 months to allow the Arts Council and other organizations to go first. And so you look at it kind of collectively in terms of what your best chances are for funding, and also it shows a sign of good faith to the legislators that you are working together within the community. And, and in terms of this community and the college, we got funding for everything we requested. It was not immediate, but it was within a three-to-five-year period. And so I think that's really important. The other thing is, we don't have a, a state representative living in Gettysburg. I think about Lancaster. And Mike Strela, who's been in the Pennsylvania Senate for years, lives in Lancaster property, lives in Lancaster township, and, and is right there, which is great. We don't have anybody locally, you know, in Harrisburg who is living here in Gettysburg. So I, I think actually, $24,000 is pretty reasonable. The only thing I have found that you really need to hold their feet to the fire, because they are a consultant, and so you want to make sure that you've got somebody who's going to be making them accountable and giving you regular reports and pushing. They also have access to what funds are available. If any of us had to do that digging, it would be, you know, intense to try to do that. So...
Could I put you two, two bits here? So Chad made a good point, or good question on whether or not these folks are actually grant writers. And the answer is no, they're not. So I've been involved with these projects, that whole list, for 10 years now. The grant writers are a lot of different people. It's, it's people like Susan Naugle, it's Habby, it's John for CDVG, it's C.S. Davidson for some of the H2O grants, it's Michael Baker that submitted the application for the, for the RACE Grant. And, and what used to happen, and Susan Naugle knows this best, is we would have all these competing grants, because Gettysburg Municipal Authority is doing the same thing with their consultants. And we would have competing grants and the, the elect- consultants, and we would have competing grants, and the elected officials, or the grant awardees, or awardeers did not like that, did not like the fact that there was competing grants. So having a unified front is really, I think, critical if, if this is going to work. And, and, and so the other thing that I would suggest, if, if you like this idea, if we're going to move forward here, and I already actually threw out a spreadsheet on creating the projects that we do want them to lobby for us. We don't want them to lobby for $1,000 grants. We want the big hitters, that, that's the most important things for the borough, for the Stormwater Authority, and for the Gettysburg Municipal Authority, so that we're in a united front, and that they can, a lot of bang for the buck in terms of, you know, the, the money that's being spent here.
They have on their staff personnel who have worked with the borough before, in years past, on different projects, and they seem to display or exhibit a genuine desire that Gettysburg succeed, and not just be a customer or a business partner, but that Gettysburg succeed, that was my impression of them.
Charles, is there anything about the backgrounds you want to say real quick?
Uh, sure, I can briefly read part of their resumes. We would work with two specific individuals, while the principal would be Kevin Kerr. He's a formerly chief lobbyist for Fortune 500 tech giants. He began his political career as chief of staff of Pittsburgh City Council President Bruce Kraus. His connections span across the Commonwealth, has expensive, extensive experience advising both the government and the private sector in urban planning and the transit space. He did a lot of work with autonomous vehicles, for example. Next to Kevin would be David Bonsik. He is a lobbyist with nearly, nearly 30 years of experience in Pennsylvania government affairs, track record of success in state capital, he's worked with CEO and Tech Council of Pennsylvania, a statewide trade association representative, representing Pennsylvania's tech industry. He was former vice president of CenturyLink, where he took the company to improve regulatory affairs operations in both Pennsylvania and New Jersey.
Is anybody opposed to this course of action? Does anybody think this expense would be wasted money?
I think, since we don't have the technical assistance skills, at least I don't have them, it would be awesome, but I think it's important to enlist professionals, especially subject matter experts who can start to help us out.
Yeah, so it was about 18 months ago that we started working closely with Michael Baker International as a civil engineering firm, and started tasking them with helping with our grant applications at the federal level. We have big plans. I think you would be hard pressed to find similarly sized municipalities that accomplish the kind of things we accomplish here, but we need some help. And we've gone through several rounds now, we feel confident that the applications that we are submitting are solid applications, but we need a little help here, we need help navigating a system that none of us is a part of. So personally, I believe that this would be money well spent, and the potential return is, you know, exponential compared to the investment, and I like that this has a very simple severability, should we get to a point where we decide that this is not working out for us. I asked Charles earlier, you know, are we even likely to see results in a, you know, a year's time? And he said, well, yeah, we're looking to get this, was it the RACE grant?
Yeah, we'll know later this year.
We're, we're looking to get this kicked over the goal line here within the next few months. So engaging with these people now may be the silver bullet we're looking for here. It may not, but it is a service I think is worth pursuing.
The other thing that I can add that a lobbying firm would do is really know who to tap into, other, besides our own representatives.
Right.
They know the committees that people serve on, and they would actually make appointments to meet with those folks, not just our representatives in Harrisburg or in Washington, but key legislators who are going to be pushing bills forward, so that's important, too.
So is everybody supportive of this course of action? Now bear in mind, we are hopeful that Stormwater and GMA would be partners in this, but they might not. Were they not, is this still something you would want to pursue at $6,000 per month?
I would feel confident in saying that, at a minimum, it'd be shared equally between Stormwater Authority and the borough. The question is, does GMA want a slice of the pie, too?
But it's, I'm asking a hypothetical question. Would everybody be comfortable with that expense if this was something that we decided to shoulder ourselves? Okay, good?
Yep, I'll have a motion for your April agenda.
Excellent. All right, we have moved through the entire agenda here, so that returns us to our second public comment section of the night. This section is not reserved for items on the agenda. You may speak on any subject of your life, we ask that you use the podium, please limit yourself to five minutes, please state your name and address of residence.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Goodmister, and I'm from the Shriver House Museum at 309 Baltimore Street. I have a couple of comments about some of the things you were talking about tonight. Where you came up with the, if, we do have 35 buses in the month of March. Where that would be $800 or $900, I don't understand. We, we are on the very end of the block, so when a bus pulls in, I really only need two spaces, and right now, I'm just going out there and putting a dollar in the meter for those two spaces, so that comes up to $70 a month, or 105 if I got three spaces, so it's not anywhere near $800 or $900, okay? And I know everybody's appalled that we're only paying $150. I remember when they were going through the ordinance, trying to develop the ordinance the last time around, agonizing over what things to include, and small museums ended up in there, which I was quite grateful for, along with theaters and other things like that, and it was the borough that came to me and said it was going to be $150 a year. I didn't ask for that fee, that's what the borough came and told me, and I was happy with it. I thought it was ridiculously low, but I was happy with it. But the, one really important thing to remember is, I don't park buses there 12 months a year, like the hotels do. Basically, it's mid-April through mid-June, it's not seven days a week, it's an hour or two here and there, some days it's a lot, and then I will say in October, we do get a lot of buses, too. So let's call it four months out of the year, not 12 months out of the year. Last Wednesday, I had seven buses, so because I had so many, I paid the fee, and the borough came and put the meter bags on early in the morning, which was terrific. My last bus came at 8 o'clock, and about 7 o'clock, my tour guides, I wasn't there, my tour guides were standing out front, and the borough parking person came along and took off the meter bag, and they said, oh, no, 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 we have another, we have another bus coming, because we paid it to it, we paid for the meter until 8 o'clock. And he said, oh, you'll be fine, you'll be fine, and lo and behold, a car parked there after I paid for the meter until 8 o'clock. So it would have been so much easier if I could have put it on and taken it off. And again, I'm saying, you wrote the ordinance. I didn't write it, you wrote it, and your ordinance says, if you meet the requirements, and apparently I do meet the requirements, because many years ago, the borough gave me a bag to put on and take off. I understand what you're all saying about being equal and things like that, but it isn't equal. I sat here last week, or two weeks ago at the meeting, and they went on and on and on about how things are different in different section of towns, like snow removal. On the square, you have 24 hours to get rid of it, or 12 hours, whatever it is to get rid of the snow, but down at my end of the street, we have 24 hours. So every place in town is not equal. So again, I'm just asking you to consider, I didn't misuse the bags, and I'd like to just be able to put them on and take them off. Because what do I do when the borough takes it off and I have a car parked there? When you said you would take care of me if I paid for the meter.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
In, in that instance, and I have it on March 18th, somebody, I'm not sure if it was you, Nancy, somebody did apply for two meter bags, and they requested the time from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's right on the application, which is why the staff was directed to take those...
And if that is, then that is my mistake, because I was the one who applied for it.
Okay.
I apologize about that.
I just wanted to clarify, that's why my officers came at 7 o'clock, because that is what was requested on the permit.
What's the latest, that they will come and take a bag off, 8 o'clock?
Yeah.
So the, they work until 8 o'clock?
They work fast.
Okay, and if I have, need a bag on a Sunday?
We're here until 1 to 8.
On a Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I thought you didn't work on the weekends.
No, we're here seven days a week.
Okay.
I bought a ticket, so I know. I keep a meter, too.
Again, I'm just asking you to, to abide by your own ordinance that you wrote, you haven't changed it, so right now, that's what's on the books.
And that was an ordinance that was written, how many years ago was that?
The Constitution was written a couple hundred years ago, but we still abide by that.
But things change, that's what our president said it there earlier.
Yeah, but you, you haven't changed your ordinance. It's, it's still written in there, that if you meet the requirements, and I do, that I should be able to get a bag. That I've never misused in all these years.
And so now, now you know the time, though, for the, so now you know that you can bag it right up until 8 o'clock, so that won't happen again.
That's correct, and that was my mistake, because I didn't realize I did that.
Clarifying that better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, my name's Mark Murphy, I live at 766 Fairview Avenue, and I am the council chairman for the St. Francis Xavier Parish Council, and I was just kind of, wanted to follow up on our business manager's earlier comments, because she spoke to the specific issue, but one of the things that kind of floored us was how this, we had no previous knowledge of this until last Friday, and it just was just dumped on us, and, you know, we're law-abiding members of the community, and so we followed the rules, but, but it just seems that this whole issue, I understand the restaurants and the museums have been engaged in this, I've read it in the paper, but it never touched us until all of a sudden, and it just seems like there really are different elements involved here. Everywhere's from, you know, using specific spots just for mobility issues versus the buses, which is different from mobility issues, which is different from, you know, people that just need the spot for a day to unload their car at their, at their new house. All of these things are different things, and to treat everybody the same, while there's an element of fairness in those words, it doesn't account for the fact that everybody is not the same. And, I mean, not, I'm not speaking of personal differences, I'm speaking of just organizational and purposeful usage reasons and everything else, and I, I think there needs to be a more broadened discussion that takes into account all these various issues. And I really appreciate the comments of support for the worship communities and everything, I really do, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Last chance. We are, thank you, everybody.